Hello, everyone. We're going to wait a few minutes to make sure we've got everybody on board. Thanks for being here. We have over 100 folks registered, but only 80 signed up. So let's give it another minute and then we'll get started. Okay. Let's, let's get going. We've got 85 folks here, so. Good evening, everyone. My name is Elizabeth Marinin. I am a retired planner. I'm a board of director of the WOMP board and sit on my local planning board. So welcome. Tonight is the Westchester Municipal Planning Federation's 2025 Zoning Board Case Law Update. And I'm thrilled to be here and to introduce two experienced attorneys who will be presenting the materials tonight. Leslie Snyder of Snyder &amp; Snyder and Lee Lefkowitz of Zaren &amp; Steinmetz. So it's my pleasure to introduce you two and thank you. As you may know, WOMP is a voluntary association of officials representing the county's 45 municipalities, including their land use boards. Its mission is to provide information to help land use officials make educated decisions regarding the future of their communities. You can learn more and view recent webinars and training opportunities at www.wmpf.org. Just a few housekeeping notes. I know everybody's interested in this. You will all be emailed certificate of completion within the next few days, crediting you with one hour of the four hours that are required for annual training for local planning and zoning board members. Attorneys may receive CLE credit through Snyder &amp; Snyder by completing the attorney affidavit, I'm sorry, attorney affirmation form. How many times did I practice this today? And an evaluation form, which were included when you registered. Please return both forms to Snyder &amp; SnyderLaw.net. These instructions are available in the chat and also on the website. Also, and probably most importantly for your attorneys, you will need the code, which will be announced during the session, so listen carefully. Okay, on to the important part. Leslie Snyder is the managing partner of Snyder &amp; Snyder LLP and leads the firm's real estate transactional practice. Leslie has over 30 years of experience negotiating leases and purchase and sale agreements for public utility infrastructure, including wireless communication facilities, battery storage systems, solar energy facilities, data centers, mobile switching centers, and electrical substations. She also successfully guides clients through land use development and permitting process for projects throughout the region, including Long Island, New York City, Westchester, and the greater Hudson Valley. Leslie's graduated summa cum laude from the Wharton School of Business at the University of Pennsylvania and holds a JD from New York University School of Law. Lee Lefkowitz is an attorney and partner at Zaren &amp; Steinmetz, focusing on the litigation of regulatory, real estate, land use, constitutional, and commercial cases in state and federal court. His cases mostly include municipal and zoning matters, environmental cleanup lawsuits, religious and civil rights actions, eminent domain and takings, as well as contract, property, and business disputes. Lee receives his JD cum laude from the Benjamin N. Cordozo School of Law 2011 and his Bachelor's of Arts in Math and English cum laude from Binghamton University in 2008. Last, but certainly not least, I'd like to acknowledge all of you in our Zoom audience who are volunteers on your land use boards. Your service to your municipality is critically important and not readily recognized. Thank you for taking the time and making the effort to serve on your local land use board to better your community. And now I'll turn it over to Leslie. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Well, thank you, everyone, for coming tonight via Zoom and listening to an interesting topic. And of course, we'll try to make it as interesting as possible. There will be questions at the end of the presentation, but feel free to put them in the chat as you think of them as we go along. The beginning of the case law update will be a discussion of use and area variances, and then Lee Lefkowitz will give us information about special permits. So we're first going to start about area variances. What is an area variance? And that's the authorization by a zoning board of the use of land in a manner which is not allowed by the physical or dimensional requirements of the applicable zoning regulations. In determining whether to grant of area variance, the zoning board has a duty to engage in a balancing test, that is, to weigh the benefit to the applicant against the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community. The zoning board is required to consider the five statutory factors. One, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the area variance. Two, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible to the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. Three, whether the requested area variance is substantial. Four, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. And five, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created. With respect to this factor, New York law provides its consideration is relevant to the decision, but not determinative. So now we're going to look at some cases that were recently decided. And in these cases, we will be looking at whether the zoning board, how did the zoning board make its decision? What was it based on? And when the court reviewed the zoning board's action, did it uphold the zoning board or did it overrule what the zoning board had decided? Our first case tonight is called Matter of Williams versus Town of Lake Luzerne Zoning Board of Appeals. It's a case from just July of this year. In this case, the petitioner acquired property from her parents in 2012 and an adjoining lot in 2018. After demolishing an old residence on the adjoining lot, the plaintiff constructed a garage and, of course, forgot to obtain building permit. When that was found out, the petitioner got a zoning violation and the petitioner had to consolidate the two lots because at this point they had one residence on one lot and they had this garage on the other lot. And you're not allowed to have an accessory use without a principal structure. So the petitioner had to merge the two lots. The garage was 17 feet, nine inches in height, while the residence was 13 feet, nine inches in height. Under this town's code, an accessory structure could not exceed the height of the principal building. The plaintiff therefore had to apply for an area variance for the difference of four feet, being that the garage is 17 feet, the residence 13 feet. The neighbors supported the application here, noting that the new garage was an improvement on the previous structure, which they considered was an eyesore. However, when they went to the zoning board, the zoning board denied the area variance, finding principally that the garage was out of character with the area and would be detrimental to the community and that they failed to address other feasible alternatives and that the variance was substantial and self-created. When the court looked over the zoning board's decision, the court overturned the decision. The court said here that the zoning board failed to properly apply the statutory balancing test. They found that their decision was not supported by the record and that it was irrational. Why was it irrational? Well, they looked at the factor as to whether an undesirable change would be produced in the neighborhood, which is what the zoning board found. The zoning board noted that the garage was incompatible with the neighborhood because they said there was no other accessory structures in that neighborhood where the accessory structure was higher than the principal structure. But the court said, that's not good enough. They didn't explain why this simple four-foot height differential would be detrimental in this experience, in this particular case, especially here, because in this particular code, houses were allowed to be 38 feet and garages were allowed to be 18 feet. So they were, the court felt that this garage, which was 17 feet, actually made the code requirements. And it was only because of this little nuance in this code that an accessory structure couldn't be taller than the principal structure. They didn't feel that that meant that it was out of character with the neighborhood. They also here, the zoning board had issued a negative declaration under SECRA and found that there was no negative environmental impact. So they also felt that they didn't have a rationale for their factor to say that it was against, had adverse impact on the environment. They also, zoning board, had even acknowledged that the garage was smaller in size and scoped that the residence had been on that lot and that the neighbors themselves had said the garage was an improvement to the area. So for all of those reasons, the court found that the zoning board's decision was to be overturned. They didn't really get into the other factors. They said really was not as critical because they really didn't address whether there were feasible alternatives, but they said that that really was difficult to consider because in this case, the garage was already constructed before the plaintiff applied for the variance. Whether it was substantial, they said it was, although it was mathematically high, it wasn't determinative because it wasn't really an actual negative impact by that simple four-foot difference between the garage and the residence on the property. So in this case, the court overruled the zoning board, finding that the petitioner was entitled to the variance. The next case we're going to discuss is Matter of Gabriel versus the Zoning Board of the Town of Eastchester. I don't know if there's any Eastchester zoning board members on the webinar, but if you are and you have any input you want to give at the end of the discussion tonight, that would be great. This case is about development. In this case, the applicant acquired property to build a residential apartment building. And what they were aiming to build was a 21-unit, five-story building in a retail business district within 150 feet of a residential district. They needed several variances for height and many of them related to height. And then there was other setback type variances that they needed. The zoning board considered all of the factors and all of the applicant's submission and granted the applicant's application, granted the variance. And the court upheld the zoning board's decision when it was challenged. Here, the court said that the ZBA's determination to grant the area variances was not arbitrary or capricious. They said here, the zoning board engaged in the required balancing test and considered the relevant statutory factors. They felt that the evidence supported the findings that the benefits sought by the applicant would not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. They went on to say that here, the zoning board based its decision on plans, photographs, renderings, visual analysis, and testimony, including from a traffic consultant, as well as they had a negative declaration from the planning board. So they felt that there was a substantial record to establish that there'd be no detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community due to the project. And they said that even in this case, if the variances were substantial or the difficulty was self-created, the other factors, it was reasonable for the zoning board to rely on the other factors and to justify their determination. One of the big factors here was that the building's height, which caused many variances to be required, here, the building was found not to be visible from any of the homes that were located within the nearby residence district. And even where it was visible from some busy corridors, the setbacks from the commercial districts mitigated any adverse visual impacts. So what this case really showed was the critical importance of making sure that the record establishes support for the findings to justify the determination. It also showed that you obviously don't need support for all five factors, as long as you're balancing the relevant considerations. The next case is called Matter of Krieger versus the Town of Southold Zoning Board of Appeals. This is an interesting case, and it has a discussion of what is a half-story of a building. What happened here is the plaintiff obtained a building permit to construct a two-and-a-half story house. And the building permit authorized the construction of unfinished storage space above the second story of the house. When they went to go build this second story, they actually finished the, they finished it, they put a floor down. And so the building inspector ruled that you really didn't create a two-and-a-half-story house. You've now created a three-story house because you finished the floor. And so they sent the plaintiff here to go get an area variance to finish, because they had finished that floor. They said it was a three-story house and not a two-and-a-half-story house, so it wasn't permitted. When they applied for the area variance, the zoning board denied the area variance. And they determined that the reading of the code was what the building inspector said, which was if you finished the floor, that was considered a story. And they really didn't get into why they denied the variance, other than to say that it was not in keeping with the neighborhood. But the court didn't really focus at all on the denial of the variance. It focused on the statutory language of the code. And that's another important duty of the zoning board, is to interpret the zoning code. And here, what the court said was the zoning board had misinterpreted the story, the definition of a half-story in this town code, because there was nothing in their definition that said that if the floor was finished, it could not be a half-story. And so they felt that the language of the code was clear and that this particular plaintiff had indeed built a half-story. And so they were entitled to a building permit as of right because they had a two-and-a-half story house. So this is an interesting case where a plaintiff gets an interpretation and goes for a variance and then goes to the zoning board of appeals with both of those factors. And here, the court focuses on the interpretation to overturn the zoning board's decision. The next case is called Matter of Hampton versus the Zoning Board of Appeals of the Village of Southampton. This case is a case where a plaintiff owns real property in the Hamptons Road Office Zoning District in the Village of Southampton. And this is a district that's a business district with a residential use designated as a special use. So in this particular case, the property had been used residentially from 1916 until 2006 as a residence. And then the house that was built there was demolished. And now this new plaintiff petitioner applied to the zoning board for a special use permit to construct a residence and for area variances for floor area and lot coverage. In this case, the zoning board denied the special permit and the variances. We're not going to get into much discussion about the special permit because our focus right now are on variances. But basically, what the zoning board determined was that the property was not suitable for residential use because they said that, that they felt that there was area variances needed for floor area and lot coverage and that those were very great variances and not in keeping with the neighborhood. That's what the zoning board said. But the court looked at the zoning board's determination and they said, this really doesn't, it's not supported by the record. And the reason why it wasn't supported by the record was they said that the plaintiff's lot here was nearly three times the minimum lot size for property in that district. And the property already had a history of residential use and there already was residential character to the neighborhood. So they felt that the zoning board was not correct in finding that it was adverse to the neighborhood. Also, they said there was no evidence before the zoning board showing that the granting of the area variances, which in this case were for floor area and lot coverage, would have an undesirable effect on the character of the neighborhood, adversely impact the physical and environmental conditions, or otherwise result in detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or the community. And therefore, the court overturned the zoning board and granted the necessary variances. The next case that we have is the Matter of Corella versus the Zoning Board of the Town of Ramapo. This case is a case where the individual applies for area variances for property to construct a three-family dwelling with three accessory apartments. Those were all permitted as of right. However, this particular plaintiff cannot make the front setback, the front yard, the side setback, the total side setback, the rear setback, and the lot coverage. So they needed several area variances. The zoning board here granted the variances, but the plaintiff, who was a neighbor, challenged it and brought this Article 78. Here, the court defers the zoning board's broad discretion, finding that the zoning board properly weighed the statutory factors and that its determination was supported by the evidence in the record and not illegal, arbitrary, capricious, or rational. The evidence before the zoning board supported its findings that the relief would not produce any undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood, or otherwise result in a detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or the community. Even if these proposed variances were arguably substantial, they felt that there was no impact on the neighbor, her neighbors, and even if the alleged difficulty was self-created. So here, the court upholds the zoning board's decision to grant the variances in light of the fact that they agree that it's not, it will not have an adverse impact on the neighborhood, that the zoning board had a record to establish that it would not be adverse to the neighborhood. We will now move on to the use variances. What is a use variance? A use variance is a much harder, has a much more difficult burden of proof than area variance. A you, because a use variance is you are providing, the zoning board is providing, an authorization for the use of land for a purpose which is not allowed or is prohibited by the applicable zoning regulations. In connection with the use variance, the applicant must demonstrate unnecessary hardship for each and every permitted use under the zoning regulations for the particular district where the property is located. To meet the standard, the applicant must demonstrate the following. One, the applicant cannot realize a reasonable rate of return for every permitted use, provided that the lack of return is substantial, as demonstrated by competent financial evidence. Two, that the alleged hardship relating to the property in question is unique and does not apply to a substantial portion of the district or the neighborhood. And three, that the requested use variance, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. And four, that the alleged hardship has not been self-created. We're going to talk about two cases tonight that deal with use variances. And they're kind of interesting because these cases, all, all the cases, the petitioner is denied the use variance and the court upholds them. But it's really curious as to how did the petitioner think they were going to get this use approved? The first case, the Matter of Adie Woodland versus the Village of Catskill. There, a purchaser buys a former St. Patrick's Academy, which is a school, which had three buildings, which is zoned for single-family residences and limited development because it's near the Hudson River. The school had ceased operations in 2006 and had been vacant. In 2022, the plaintiff applies for 43 apartment units. And obviously, they said you're going to need a use variance because this is only allows single-family residences and some limited development. The zoning board denies the use variance on the grounds that this, that they didn't even get into the dollars and cents proof, which is a typical thing that sort of makes it very difficult to get a use variance. They basically said that they were, that this project would have an adverse impact on the neighborhood. And the reason they said that was they looked at here, traffic. And what the petitioner did here, which was smart to try to prove its point, was it presented a traffic analysis, which showed that the traffic for these apartment units would be equivalent to when the school operated. But still, the fact that the school had not been operated since 2006, the zoning board said, that's really irrelevant, what it was like as a school. It hasn't been a school in, you know, over a decade and that a school generates different traffic patterns than this project would do. And so therefore, it was not, it was not unsubstantiated for the zoning board to say that it was going to alter the essential character of the neighborhood because it was going to have an adverse traffic impact. The second thing was that the hardship was self-created. And this is one that the court, unlike an area variance, a zoning board, when they're deciding a use variance, the fact that it was self-created is a factor to be considered. And in this case, the court acknowledged that the court is not responsible for guaranteeing the investment of careless land buyers. They're saying, you petitioner, you bought this property. You knew it only could be used for single-family homes. The fact that it was a school- The fact that it was a school previously really is irrelevant. You should have known, and you've created the hardship. And therefore, it was justified to deny the use variance. The next case is called the matter of Franklin Square Realty Associates versus the Board of Appeals of the Town of Hempstead. This case is an interesting case because there had been a prior granted use variance. What happened in this case is the plant, the petitioner here wanted to construct a self-storage facility on a property that was split-zoned in business and residential districts. The property, because part of the, the um, part of the property was zoned residential, they needed a use variance. What the plaintiff tried to argue was in nineteen fifty-nine, there had been a use variance granted on this property. So therefore, that the zoning board should grant them a use variance now in twenty twenty-five, or whenever this was, I think this was decided actually, the lower court back in, in um the zoning board uh in twenty twenty-three, but that basically, um the fact that there had been a nineteen fifty-nine use variance, there was no, there was no reason for the zoning board to have to rely on that use variance. Um that this was a whole new use variance. You have to look at it on its face. And the fact that there was an old one from nineteen fifty-nine, which extended business use into residential zones, did not obviate the need to get a new use variance for the self-storage and that they had to look at current situations. And therefore, the zoning board's decision to deny the use variance was upheld. There are other types of applications that do require use variances often. And those are typically in the utility arena. And the thought process in that is that utilities have a lesser standard uh for use variances. Angela, maybe you can move to the next slide, which talks about um the use variances. Um, this is really the secret, but um I think there's one after this about utilities, which essentially say that there's a different standard for public utilities, which is the public necessity standard. And so um if you have a public utility such as um electric substation or a quest for a wireless communication facility, there's a relaxed standard for a use variance. You don't have to provide the dollars and cents proof. What you do have to provide is that the use is necessary for the applicant to render safe and adequate service. And there's been a whole host of uh court decisions, and this has been very helpful in allowing utilities to expand their infrastructure because of what the court has found is where the intrusion of burden on the community is minimal, the showing required by the utility is correspondingly reduced. And that an applicant is entitled to a use variance if it's necessary to provide the safe and adequate service. One other things to think about for a zoning board before we go into special permits is um SECR. And I'm sure as a zoning board member, um you often have to deal with SECR. And um in this outline, and I, I, it's getting late, so I'm not going to get into it. Um, there are certain instances uh where you're going to have to apply SECR, and there's others. Lot of the zoning boards, anything in connection with a single-family, et cetera, you don't have to comply with SECR. But that will be on the outline that'll be posted to the WOMP. And now, um we'll go on to special permits with Lee.
Thank you, Leslie. Appreciate it. Hello, everyone. Good evening. I'm Lee Lefkowitz from Zerrin and Simonets. Um so uh moving on now to the third type of approval that you um as zoning board members and planners often likely deal with, these are special permits. So a special permit is a third category of approval that um is an authorization of a particular land use that is permitted in a zoning or local law, but it's subject often to conditions. Unlike what Leslie was talking about dealing with area variances and use variances, a special permit use is an acknowledged uh permitted use. It is deemed by the municipality, when that municipality enacts a special permit use, that it is in harmony with the uh land use and the comprehensive plan in that area. So what Leslie was talking about with area variances and use variance, the applicant is purposely attempting to you uh employ either a use or dimensional um uh requirement on the site that's different than what's allowed, and they're asking essentially for an exception. Special permits aren't like that. Special permits, the use is allowed, it is permitted, and it's in harmony with the land use in the area. But the municipality has decided that there are certain conditions that need to be met that they want to see, and it allows them to exercise some level of control over the use on the site, as opposed to if they were to make that use purely as a right, meaning no um approvals are required. It can be done as a right. Uh we're seeing nowadays that most municipalities are actually moving in the direction of making most uses at least subject to a special permit rather than purely as a right because it allows them to place certain conditions and allow either a ZBA or a planning board or even uh a city council or a town board or a village board to exercise some level of, of control or approval on the site. Um and so the, I, I at least believe, if you're not already seeing it already, that more and more of these special use cases are going to be coming up. Um and as I, as indicated on the slide here, that could be a ZBA or a planning board or the, the municipality's legislative boards. Um, any one of them could be the one who the legislature decides to invest with the, with the power to control that special permit. Um, and this, if it wasn't clear already, is a lighter standard than any of the variances that Leslie was talking about. This, this is a, it's sort of a black and white test here. If you meet the conditions, you're entitled to the special permit. Um if you don't, then you either have to seek a variance or you can seek a waiver of those conditions. Uh Angela, if you could advance to the next slide. Um, so when dealing with a challenge on a um special permit, your uh, it's a similar review standard to what Leslie was dealing with in the sense that a court will defer to a uh municipality. Uh municipalities are, are vested with tremendous deference when uh granting or denying an approval and will only be reversed if a um, if a decision is deemed to be arbitrary capricious. That means, Leslie indicated this a little bit, but it's arbitrary capricious if the decision is not supported by substantial evidence in the record. Um, the record is all of the formal submissions and public statements that are made on an application. So what that means is that when a decision makes its way into court, the courts aren't supposed to consider outside evidence that wasn't actually in front of the reviewing board at the time. And what that also means is that as a board member, while you can, court, court decisions have said that you can make common sense judgments or even judges based on your own personal familiarity and knowledge of the site or the application, you cannot use general community opposition or pure opinion in making a decision. Though those um concepts would not be deemed to be included in the quote-unquote record, um but your own knowledge can be. Um, you can advance again, Angela. Thank you. So to illustrate some of these principles, I'm going to take you through six different cases today specific to um special permits. I think they're all going to be really interesting because they each touch on slightly different areas of um what we just went through. So the first one is eight fifty-three, eight fifty-five McLean versus Yonkers. I know I saw that we, we have some Yonkers, I think, ZBA members and may, uh maybe some other uh Yonkers board members here in the audience. So if you have some familiarity with this, feel free to um jump in in the chat. We can discuss it afterwards. Uh but actually, interestingly, first of all, this is the only Westchester case that I'm going to be talking about. The others are in other areas of New York, and they're all appellate cases. These are all second department or third department cases, so there are binding precedent. Um, but this is the only one that, that before it made its way up to the appellate court originated in Westchester. Um, and actually, I was going to mention, this actually doesn't directly concern a um, a Z, the ZBA, because in this case, the special permanent issue was delegated to, and this is a little unusual, but Yonkers does it with they, with this way on this particular special permit. The reviewing power was delegated to first the planning commission and then to um the city council. Uh but both levels of review had to be achieved in order to obtain this special permit. This was a property owner who owned a gas station, and on his site, uh it was a uh special permit use to add a convenience store to that gas station. So he put in an application um to allow him to install a convenience store. The planning board actually approved it, found that the conditions were satisfied. And then when it made its way to the city council, the city council denied it. Um, the, the uh property owner challenged it, sued in court under an Article seventy-eight. Uh and the court reversed the city council and directed it to allow the installation of the convenience store. There, there are two things that I think are important to understand in this case. One is that, in this case, the second department um thought was critical that the city, it was all about the record. The city council's denial um was based in a record that indicated it was focused on community opposition. There was a lot of folks out in the audience who were opposed to the addition of a convenience store. I can tell you from my experience, actually did one of these in Yonkers. Um, a gas station seeking a special permit in a convenience store, and the same exact thing happened where we were approved at the planning board and then denied at the city council and revert, and we obtained a reversal in court. Uh, this is not my case, but it's the same scenario. And um the, the same exact thing played out where you had immense opposition to the convenience store, which is often based in um opposition to there being a twenty-four-hour use, a fear that there could be an increase in crime. Um, but there has to be something in the record supporting those findings. So when the city, when the planning board approved it, and then it went to the city council, who relied on statements of opposition in the audience um without hard evidence of there being um and maybe an increase in crime or some other tangible um real uh uh piece of evidence that they could rely on in denying it, the court reversed it. Um, finding that if you meet the conditions, again, the special permit, you meet the conditions, you're entitled to, to the use. The second case is Ten Street versus New York City Department of Buildings. So as you can gather, this is um in New York City, this is Queens. Um, so this is a petitioner who puts in a, an application to establish a transient hotel in Queens in June twenty eighteen. At the time he submitted that application, it was a, an as-of-right use. Uh, so you could just do it. And, and so he gets his approval, he um, he gets his building permit. But before he commences work, um he get, the city adopts a resolution changing the use from an as-of-right to a special permit. So now you have to meet conditions to um uh in order for him to obtain a permit. Now, you may be asking, oh, wait a minute, he already got his building permit. I'm not going to dive too deep into that because the case doesn't, but that's an issue of what, of what's called uh under legal precedent vested rights. So the question is, you may have a building permit, but do you yet have a vested right in that permit? And without going too deep into it, there's law that says that you need to have um uh undergone substantial expenditures in furtherance of the permit before you have vested rights. So if you've ju, all you've got is your piece of paper, but you haven't started work yet, um it's possible that what happened here could happen where a city council then changes the law and you, you had an as-of-right use, it's now a special permit use. Um, what happened there is the Department of Buildings um issued him a letter saying, you've got to go back, you've got to go now establish the special permit criteria if you want to move forward. The petitioner sues uh to challenge that uh letter threatening to revoke the permit. Interestingly, the court um denies the challenge and allows the Department of Buildings to go forward and revoke the permit and require the applicant to go back and show the special permit criteria. The issue here was um sort of an issue out of left field. The uh court finds that the applicant didn't quote-unquote exhaust his administrative remedies, and therefore, the Article seventy-eight proceeding wasn't yet ripe. Uh, what that means is, and this is where it comes pertinent to you all as zoning board members, in order to bring an Article seventy-eight challenge, you can't just get a denial and then say, well, that's it, I'm going to go sue over it. You have to first show that you've exhausted your administrative remedies at the municipal level. So here, although the court doesn't say it, I can kind of glean from it, what the court wanted the applicant to do is first take that revocation by the building department, and if he thinks it's improper, he's got to appeal it to the zoning board of appeals. Only after the zoning board of appeals, which has that first level of appellate review weighs in on it, then can he sue under an Article seventy-eight to challenge uh whether that was the correct decision or not. So um he's got to, unfortunately for him, the court says you got to go back. And if you want to try to challenge whether you need to actually uh pursue the special permit criteria, you've got to first go to the ZBA and, and challenge the Department of Buildings um uh before you can sue. The next case is PF Development Group versus Town of Brunswick. Um, so this is an interesting case. This is um a, excuse me, just get my screen. So this is a developer whose property spans two zoning districts. One is residential, the other's business. Um, so he originally pursue, uh pursues on the business site a uh somewhat large um uh mixed-use development where there's going to be uh multi-family on the residential site and then a gym, fast food, and supermarket on the other side. Midway through uh the town rezones and allows multifamily on his residential site. So he um revises his plans, and now he wants a large um, a five-two-story apartment buildings um on the residential side, and he changes the commercial side a little bit. The town then adopts a moratorium on multifamily, and then again changes the zoning on him to reduce the density that was allowed under that special permit. So in this lawsuit, uh he sues, es- essentially sues based on this whiplash that he's, he's experiencing, right? First, he's, he's pursuing a mixed-use project, then they come in and say, you're, you're fine, you have it, now it's a special permit use. You can come in with a multifamily project on the residential side. And then, once he proposes a project that they don't really like, they, they change it back on him. Um, interestingly, this is a third department case. Uh, uh, and this is, I, in my experience, at least somewhat unusual. The third department dismisses most of his challenge, but leaves, he challenges it based on numerous grounds, including spot zoning. Um, I won't get into that, whether it's consistent with the comprehensive plan. Um, the, it dismisses all of them but leaves intact one challenge, which is the fact that after he revises his project to try to avail himself of the special permit, the planning board chair um who was a neighbor to his site uh came out in opposition to it, eventually recuses himself, but the planning board had issued recommendations to the town board at the time that they then reduced his density on the multifamily site. So the court allowed him to move forward with that challenge on the claim of bias by the planning board chair. Um, and whether that reduction in density on the multifamily side was influenced by bias and was therefore improper. Um, so again, an interesting um fact pattern for you all to be aware of. We, we haven't talked much about this yet, but just the importance of um understanding when you may have a conflict of interest when you're sitting on the board and the importance of knowing when to recuse and, and to step away from that, or rather than subject yourself to the risk of a challenge as, as the Town of Brunswick did here. Uh, the next case is two sixty B C versus East Hampton. Um, this is an interesting case out in Suffolk County. Um, here, the petitioner owns a parcel by the beach. Um, he wants to construct a raised walkway that will allow him to ac- access the ocean. Um, he's got to get two different layers of review. One is um approval from DEC because um uh DEC has jurisdiction over his beachfront property, but then he also has to go to the um ZBA of East Hampton to get a special permit for the, for the walkway. He gets his DEC approvals first, then he goes to the ZBA, which denies his special permit, and he sues. Um, the, interestingly, the um, the second department agrees that the special permit was properly denied. As indicated earlier, it's sort of a rare thing, because when a special permit, as long as you satisfy the conditions, you're entitled to it. Here, several of the conditions that East Hampton had for this permit were somewhat um gave, gave the ZBA a little bit more leeway in making the determination. For example, the walkway had to be compatible with the quote "character of the neighborhood" and um, and aesthetically, visibility, and in scale and appearance acceptable to the character of the neighborhood. So that allowed, that inserted a little bit of subjectivity, but not enough that it totally um eviscerated the ZBA's requirement to have some evidence in the record. In this case, the town's chief environmental um analyst, which I guess they employ out there in East Hampton, um provided aerial photos of other Um provided aerial photos of other walkways in the area. That were not raised the way this one was and were more natural walkways to provide that, provide access to the beach. Um that hard evidence, which the Z B A then relies on in denying the special permit. The court says that's totally fine, as long as you have that evidence in the record, as long as it is a, is it, it is a condition. Uh that you can, based on that evidence, indicate that the applicant failed to meet, you then can deny the special permit, which they did. Um importantly, I'll add, it is, when a town adopts a special permit with conditions. Those conditions do need to, under the law, bear a um a connection to the actual use. Um in this case, I think because we're talking about a beachfront property, it probably. Uh was, wa- there was probably a little more leeway for the town in that case to. Impose conditions more focused on aesthetics and visibility and scale and character. Then you might, for example, convenience store and a gas station as we've dealt with before. The next case, also East Hampton, same special permit. Um comes out the other way, which I thought uh was interesting. So here we've got petitioners, again waterfront property. This time they want uh to construct a dock um on their property. The Z B A denies the application, the petitioner sues. In this case, the second department reverses the Z B A and says. You should not have denied a special permit. He met the conditions, you should have granted them. Um this, in my view, is a is a great example of an applicant doing what you've gotta do to get a special permit. So here, there were pretty um specific. Tailored to the special permit conditions for installing a dock. There were dimensional requirements for how big the dock can be. There were requirements for where a boat um had to be able to be placed and moored against the dock. There were material requirements. Um it's clear from from the case that the Z B A didn't want this dock here. Um but each time that they raised a concern about the dock. The applicant met the concern and um many of these conditions that were required for the dock. Um said that the Z B A had to consider alternatives to um the dimensional requirements or the placement of boat access and the applicant. Um hit the target each time when um they offered an alternative for a different place where a boat could be. He conducted a study that showed that the um the sea level was too low in that location and and boats may. Um may run aground in that area. Uh when they suggested a pulley system for putting the boat in a different location. He introduced evidence that um it could be dangerous for children playing on the on the dock to be near the pulley system. So. Each time the Z B A tried to throw him a curveball, he hit it. And as a result, then when the Z B A tried to deny him, the court said, well, there wasn't evidence in the record yet. This is the quote-unquote substantial evidence in the record supported the applicant's view of of the of the case, not the Z B A's. Interestingly, in this case, after the fact, in the article seventy-eight, the Z B A introduced an expert witness. Who tried to rebut the applicant's um evidence in the record about the sea level. And the court said, well, we can't consider that. That expert came in here in the litigation, not back during the municipal process in the record. So because it was too late, the court didn't consider it, they can only look at uh what's there in the record. The last case is Smith, the Thompson Planning Board. Um here, we have a developer who wants to build a mixed-use residential and commercial project in the town of Thompson. One thousand six hundred thirteen residential units. Um and on the commercial side, uh it's a large warehouse slash distribution facility. And that that's important. That's how he describes it, warehouse slash distribution facility. Um ultimately, uh which is um subject to a special permit. If it's a warehouse, but not if it's a distribution facility. The, in this case, planning board has jurisdiction over that special permit. Um grants the special permit, site plan approval, SECR, and um he gets his approvals. The uh petitioners in the litigation are neighbors who sued and challenged his approvals. Um they assert that. The planning board should not have made the call as to whether this is a warehouse or a distribution facility. So let me back up to that. The applicant himself called it a warehouse district slash distribution facility. Only a warehouse gets a special permit. A distribution facility isn't per- isn't a permitted use and their code had two different. Um definitions, there's a definition for warehouse and a definition for distribution facility. So the petitioners sue and they say, you sh- you ought, planning board, you ought to have referred the question to the Z B A. Because the determination and interpretation of a code is the Z B A's jurisdiction, not the planning board's jurisdiction. And they offer evidence from the record that. Based on the site plant and the number of uh delivery days in the structure. Um an expert testified in the record that. That is more akin to a distribution facility, that number of delivery days um is more. In line with a distribution facility than a warehouse. You'd see far fewer at a warehouse where there's storage, not not coming and going as much. Um so because there was that certified planner in the record making that attestation. Uh and the court agreed that under the law, interpretation of the code is in the Z B A's jurisdiction, not in the planning board's. The court actually sides with the neighbors who challenged the special permit and reverses and says, planning board. You should have once faced with that question and the evidence, substantial evidence in the record that this could be the wrong characterization. You should have referred that question to the Z B A or to code enforcement in the first instance. To make a determination as to what use this is and whether this even qualified for the special permit in the first place. Those are my six cases. I hope everyone enjoyed hearing about them. Happy to answer any questions as well as questions for Leslie about um about variances.
Uh before we jump to questions, Leslie, I think it might be a good time to give the uh C L E code for attorney credit.
Right, so the code for today um is gonna be rainbow. Since after all this rain, there was a rainbow tonight. So. For anyone getting um C L E credit, that's the code that you'll need to um indicate. On the um attorney affirmation form. And I don't know, Angela, if you wanna just repeat for people how they get uh the credits.
Sure, there will be a pop-up at the end of this presentation with a post-webinar survey. Uh once you complete that, it will provide a link for you to go to the W O M F website where you can download your attendance certificate. And the forms for attorney C L E credit will also be available on the website. And it looks like we have a question from Lee. I'm gonna read this out uh for you. What is the current thinking about who can supply competent financial evidence? Should it be an appraiser or can a real estate consultant discussing who might want to locate out of sight be sufficient?
So I think.
That's for you, Leslie, right? That's about.
Yeah.
He's talking about.
Yeah, I, I think what Lee is saying is what is, what is competent financial information? So. Um typically, that is supposed to be, you know, some kind of accountant, cause again. For a use variance, if you wanna use it for a use that's not permitted, you have to show that you can't use it. For any other use that's permitted in the code and you have to show that you can't get a reasonable rate of return. So you're gonna need uh quite a bit of accounting to show this dollars and cents proof. So I would think anyone, any type of accountant who can show from a financial standpoint. Um you know, should be able to document, but again, it's what they present.
Okay, we have another question. Uh who is entitled to grants and adjournment and are they ever automatically granted?
Actually, technically, it's the board that has to grant the adjournment. Um and I don't think there's anything that says that they're automatically granted unless. The particular um zoning board um has a rules like procedures. Which basically some, I've seen some zoning boards which says that the applicant is entitled to one adjournment. At least one adjournment. But if they don't have specific rules, then technically the applicant has to request an adjournment and the zoning board has to grant it.
Um somebody asked, uh can we review the SECR slide? Let me.
Sure, we can go back.
Sure, just give me one second. Can you see this slide?
Uh, see, yes.
Okay.
Here we are with the SECR slide. So zoning boards have to comply with SECR. Um most, many of the actions that the zoning board uh take are often type-two actions. Type-two actions mean they've been ter- determined not to have a significant adverse impact on the environment. Typical type-two actions are the. Construction expansion or placement of minor accessory or pertinent residential structures. Including garage, carports, patios, swimming pools, et cetera. Um and then also the granting of individuals setback and lotline variances and lotline adjustments. And the granting of an area variance for single-family, two-family and three-family residences. Those are the ones that usually the zoning board um, a lot of the actions come under, so therefore. If it's a type-two, then they don't have to comply. They don't have to go further with SECR cause it's already determined not to have an adverse effect.
Any other questions? Angela, do you see any other questions or no?
I don't see any.
Someone asked if we can get copies of the slides, but.
Yeah, the copies of the slides will be on the website. We'll put that on the website. I think someone asked if we're distributing materials. We will not be distributing materials. We'll just be putting it on the website. I think someone is asking a question about the zoning board only interprets code on an appeal. And that's actually correct. Essentially, what's happening is the building inspector. Has the job of interpreting the code. Many towns, the building inspector doesn't wanna give a determination and he sends it off to the zoning board. But the the proper uh procedural is that you go to the building inspector. Eh to get interpretation and if you don't like the building inspector's interpretation. You can go to the zoning board for interpretation and they're supposed to review it de novo, which means that they're supposed to review it without. Looking or considering what the what the building inspector, they're supposed to look at the code and determine. Uh what its meaning is uh by the plain language of the code or any legislative intent that they may have.
And that was um in reference to the quest, maybe the question of distribution center versus warehouse and we're getting that interpretation that I was mentioning, so. Some municipalities, you can go straight to the zoning board for an interpretation like that, but it's, eh, you're right, but in that case. I don't know what um Thompson does. It may be that to exhaustion of administrative remedies, if the if the planning board. Is faced with a question, is should it be a distribution center or warehouse? It may be that you first need to go to the code code enforcement officer to get his interpretation and then go to the, up to the zoning board and then back to the planning board.
Well, I don't think we have any more questions, but we appreciate everyone taking the time um to attend. We thank you for, uh we've got a lot of positive feedback, so we thank you uh for the positive feedback. And we hope you have a wonderful evening. Thanks again, thank you for your participation.
Have a great night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.